All right. We'll get started here. Good morning. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for July 24, 2017. I'm PJ, Planning Department Director. The reason I'm starting the meeting is we had nominations or appointments of two new commissioners. And so with the first meeting after those nominations, there's no Chair, Vice Chair. So we just have to go through a couple procedural things and then we'll be able to get the meeting officially start rolling. So Commissioner Rivers and Commissioner Marsh are not here. And we'll start with the elections of the Chair. Any nominations for Chair?
I nominate Travis.
Second that nomination.
Any elections for Chair? Any nominations for Chair?
No, that's fine. You're good.
Okay. All those in favor of Commissioner Lassiter as Chair of the Planning Commission, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Anything else?
Are you going to do the move by and second by, so cease nominations?
Oh, okay. Thank you. I don't do that this often. I don't do this that often. Okay, let's go back then one step. Entertain a motion to cease nominations for Planning Commission Chair.
Second.
Again.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's try this one more time then. All those in favor of Commissioner Lassiter as Chair of the Planning Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Commissioner Chair Lassiter, meeting's yours.
Well, thank you. At this moment, we'll take nominations for First Vice Chair.
I nominate Rich Marsh.
Second. Any other nominations for Vice Chair? We have to do it three times, is that correct PJ?
Have to do it.
Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Hearing no other nominations, do I have a motion to cease nominations?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor for voting for Rich Marsh's First Vice Chair? Signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
It's moved at Rich Marsh's First Vice Chair. We'll now open up for nominations for Second Vice Chair. Do we have a nomination for Second Vice Chair?
I nominate Catherine.
I'll second then.
Any other nominations for Second Vice Chair? Any nominations for Second Vice Chair? Hearing none, we'll close. We'll, I'll open up for a motion to cease nominations for Second Vice Chair.
So moved.
Second. All in favor for Kathy to be our Second Vice Chair? Go ahead and vote now. Aye.
Oh, aye. I was saying you were going to say forever hold your peace. Sorry.
Forever hold your peace? I don't know. I'm sorry, this is my first time to be a Chair of a meeting, so it might be a little rough. I apologize there. All those opposed? And it looks like Kathy will be our Second Vice Chair. Congratulations Kathy.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next approval of the July 10, 2017 minutes. Are there any corrections? Anything in the minutes? Did everybody get a chance to look at them? To verify that there's no corrections? Does it all look good?
I'll move for approval of the minutes.
I'll second. There's a move and second. Any discussion at this time? All right, those who are in favor of passing the minutes, approval of the minutes, July 10 minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? All right, minutes passed. Approval of the agenda. This one, I'm a little rusty on how this goes. But if I understand, it's just going through the entire, do I read, I read the consent calendar part first, correct?
No, they're approving, they're looking to approve the agenda as it is, and then the next item, item four, is the consent calendar.
Okay.
I move to approve the agenda as written.
All right.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? There we go. Then we have the approval of minutes. Now, we'll go ahead and read the consent calendar here. The following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendations by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of the Planning Commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. PJ, do you mind going ahead and reading the?
No problem. There's quite a few, so settle in. PJ, kind of a director of planning department. Item number four in the consent calendar, condition use permit review 0101 for Charles and Ursula Brackett. To review a mobile home park in a suburban residential district, staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit 0101 to the October 23, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item five, conditional use permit review 0514, to review a single wide manufactured home as a single-family residence in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 0514 with eight conditions. Item six, conditional use permit review 1216 for John and Penny Fosheim, to review a vacation home rental in suburban residential district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 1216. Item seven, conditional use permit review 1217, John and Penny Fosheim, to review a vacation home in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 1217. Item eight, conditional use permit review 1513 for Richard and Dolores Lindstrom. Rod Lindstrom is the agent to review a ranch hand residence in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 1513. Item nine, conditional use permit review 1605 for Spring Creek Hideaway LLC. Branton Pam Verick as the agents to review a vacation home in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit 1605 to the October 23, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item 10, conditional use permit review 1612 TC Enterprise Incorporated, to allow bicycle rentals, ATV rentals, and a retail shop as a neighborhood commercial in suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1612 with 10 conditions. Item 11, conditional use permit review 1615, Tom and Lynn Distler, to review recreational vehicle to be used as a temporary residence while building a single-family residence on the subject property in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval, staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1615 with 10 conditions. Item 12, conditional use permit 1727 for Beverly Sears, to allow an existing 12-foot by 12-foot structure to be used as a single-family residence in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1727 with 16 conditions. Item 13, construction permit review 1606 from Heavy Construction, to review the removal and replacing of asphalt, which will include regrading of the road within the mobile home park. Staff recommends to end construction permit 1606. Item 14, plan unit development review 0804 for Linda Kramer, to review a planned unit development to allow for three additional cabins in a planned unit development. Staff recommends approval of the extension of plan unit development 0804 with 12 conditions. Item 15, minor plan unit development amendment 1706, Hans Peter and Christine Streak as fiscal landserving as the agent, to amend the existing plan unit development. Staff recommends to continue minor plan unit development amendment 1706 to the August 14, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item 16, plan unit development review 0607, Rapid City MHP LLC, Cimarron Mobile Home Park, to review a plan unit development to allow a mobile home park. Staff recommends to continue the plan unit development review of 0607 to the August 14, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item 17, vacation of plat 1701, Walter Horton, to vacate the plat of lot 5, also in sections 27 and 21 of Moon Ranch subdivision. Section 28, staff recommends to continue vacation of plat 1701 to the August 28, 2017 Planning Commission meeting.
Looks like the end of the consent calendar there. Staff need, want to pull any items?
For minor corrections, we'd like to pull number six and number nine.
Six and nine. Any of the Planning Commission want to pull any of the consent calendar items? Any member of the audience want to pull any of the consent calendar items that PJ just read from the, for consideration, for separate consideration?
Does that mean do we speak on it? Would you like to speak on it?
If you want one taken off that's not already, yes.
Or no, just to be able to speak on one that was?
You probably best pull it.
Yep. If you want to, if you want to speak on one of the items, you need to come up here and ask for that item to be removed, from the consent calendar.
You have to do it now.
Okay.
What number?
Beverly Sears.
Number six. It's already been pulled.
It's 12.
That's number 12.
Number 12?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just for the ability to speak on it.
Okay. Okay.
All right, so if I understand that correct, we're going to, we'll need a motion for the consent calendar. Basically, four through five, removing six. Then seven through, seven and eight, removing nine. And then 10 and 11, removing 12, and then number 13. So we'll have six, nine, and 12 removed from the consent calendar.
They're moved. 14, 15, 16, and 17.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that one. You said, oh, and 14, 15, 16, 17 for the rest of the consent calendar. You're correct. And I heard a motion.
I move to approve, removing six, nine, and 12.
Second. Hearing a motion and a second. Are there any discussion? If there's none, all in favor of the consent counter, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, consent calendar moves forward. So that takes us to item number six. Is that correct?
Correct. Item six is conditional use permit review 1216, to review a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district with John and Penny Fosheim as the agents. Staff is just making a correction to page four of four of the staff report. In the last main paragraph, there was an expiration date of 12/31/16. That should actually be 12/31/17. With that, staff still recommends the, to end conditional use permit 1216 due to the transfer which occurred on December 23, 2014. Do they need a motion to make that change? Let me just make it. So.
I'll move to make the change to the, to conditional permit CU 1216, per staff recommendation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And it passes? So that takes us to item number nine.
Item number nine is a conditional use permit review 1605, to review a vacation home rental in a general agriculture district for Spring Creek Hideaway LLC. Again, minor corrections on page two of four. Section two, item A, it says on July 5, 2017. That should say July 5, 2016. And then also on page four of four of the staff report in conditions one and two, it refers to conditional use permit 1601. In both of those conditions, that should be 1605, in both of those conditions as stated above. With that, staff still recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit 1605 to the October 23, 2017 Planning Commission meeting, to allow staff time to conduct a site visit after the tourism season is done, with the two conditions.
Is there a motion for item number nine?
I'll move approval with the corrections per the staff.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Will, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that carries us to item number 12.
Item number 12 is conditional use permit 1727, which requests to allow an existing 12-foot by 12-foot structure to be used as a single-family residence in a suburban residential district. The applicant is Beverly Sears, and it encompasses .11 acres. Was there anything I can go through it? It's up to you.
Is everybody familiar with this piece of?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I don't know if we need everyone to go through it. PJ, is there anything else you need to tell us before any gentleman comes up?
No, sir.
Is the applicant here as well? Just out of curiosity.
Agent?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Please come forward and state your name and, for the record.
There's six. Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Mike Sears. I'm Bev Sears' son. And what I wanted to come and speak on with the permit, and I think what I'm asking for is just essentially that she be allowed to have her grandkids sleep in it. So she has this 12-by-12 structure that, there used to be a carport on the lot, and she was working with a builder who thought that because there was an existing structure, when he took that down and put up this unit, which was less than 144 square feet, that he didn't need to get a building permit, which then became clear that that wasn't the case. So then when the unit went up without the building permit, it got all kind of messy. So she got a conditional use permit, but one of the conditions was that nobody could sleep in it. It was essentially a storage shed. And so she has nine grandkids that come in at Christmas and in the summer. So when I was back this spring, she said, well, you know, the grandkids will want to play in there, and I said, and have a sleepover. And I said, well, they can't sleep in there. It will be illegal. Grandkids will be criminals. And so she said, well, you know, they can sleep in there. And I said, no, you know, legally, we can't do that. It's not allowed in the permit. So then, the bigger discussion was, what can I do to bring this into compliance? So I met with TJ, not PJ, but TJ and Brittany with the Planning Commission, and they sat down with me and went through the different needs to bring it into compliance, which was to get a, some kind of septic, right? And we did measurements and so on and so forth. So my desire is to find a way for a permit to be granted that would allow her grandkids to sleep in it. It isn't something, she's not applying for a vacation rental license. She's not, I just wanted to find a way, because with the old permit too, neighbors could file a complaint and say, someone's sleeping in there. And that happened this last time, and no one has been sleeping in there, but she, she's 79. She gets a letter in the mail saying, someone has complained that you have people sleeping in there, and you don't have a permit allowing that. So now we have to have somebody come up and investigate. And I'm just trying to take that stress out of her life, and just have a permit that the grandkids can stay, everything is clear and fine, and we can go on our way. So that's essentially what the request is.
Any questions?
Questions?
Oh, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any member of the audience have anything else to add? Seeing none.
I make a motion to approve the conditional use permit.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. There's a motion on the table. All in favor of the, of approving the, what is that, CU 1727? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. So then that takes us to item number 18. Is that correct PJ?
That's correct, sir. Item number 18 is major plan unit development amendment 1704, to amend an existing plan unit development. The applicant is Kelly Development. Ryan Kelly is the agent. Track B is approximately 11.15 acres. This has been before the Planning Commission as a layout plat and a minor plat. It's also been before you a couple times presented as this major plan unit development amendment. For new members, I'll go through a quick summary. On December 26, 2006, the Board of Commissioners approved plan unit development 0609 with 22 conditions, which included lots one and two. And then also, the remainder of that parcel, which is called Track B, which for purposes of this, plan unit development are proposed lots three, four, five, and six. On March 11, 2013, the planning director approved final plat that actually created lots one and two, and allowed for building permits to be applied for on those properties. Lot one and lot two are part of plan unit development 0609, as with the current Track B, which encompasses, as stated earlier, lots three, four, five, and six. What the applicant is looking to do as of 2016 is to create lots three, four, five, and six, split up, which is now Track B, into those four sections. With that, one of the conditions is to approve, or is to have the plan unit development amended for lots three, four, five, and six, which basically changed the legal description. And then there's a few other conditions that are changing with that. If this major plan unit development amendment is approved, lots one and two would still remain under the old plan unit development amendment 0609. There's been lots of conversations back and forth with staff, landowner, the landowner and agent, and also with some residents in the area. We've been hashing through a few changes here and there. Not much has come up in the last couple weeks as far as changes. Speaking with one of the landowner, or one of the neighbor representatives, just a couple minutes ago, I know there's a couple suggestions for, with the conditions that she may have and might want to speak. Just as far as other updates, staff has been approached by three, either landowners or agents of the landowners, about building permits on at least three of those four lots. They've been told all that you can apply for one single-family residence building permit on those lots, as it is an existing lot, and you're allowed to have one. But none of the three chose to apply. We checked over registrar deeds. There are no deeds on file that there are any other landowners other than Kelly Development. There were three specific conditions that Planning Commission was interested in looking at, and which staff and the applicant have amended, that was condition number 13, and condition number 19. The main condition that was still of question was condition number 20 from plan unit development 1704, which stated that no private wells be drilled on any individual lots. That came up with members from the last Planning Commission that were here. There wasn't really any solution with that, so staff would like to bring that back up again today, to see what Planning Commission would like to do with the wording of that. And I do believe the representative from the Neighborhood Association would like to speak on it as well. The applicant is in the audience today, and if there are no changes to be made to PU 1704 condition, staff recommends approval of major plan unit development 1704 with the 22 conditions.
All right. Anything else PJ?
Not at this time.
Any questions from the Commission?
No.
And for PJ? Okay, I guess we'll open it up to the audience. Mr. Kelly, would you like to speak first?
Oh, okay. Okay, all right, because that'll probably just tie in. Okay, because I think then we'd all be on the same page. Hi, sorry. Elaine Karski, I am on the Board of the Sheridan Lake Highlands HOA and the Road District, and been working very closely with the applicant to ensure we're all on the same page on these conditions, and that the residents are all good with it too. So that's been a very good relationship. The one item is number 20, that no private wells will be drilled on any individual lots. I think the inference there made by the Commission was that they wanted those lots to join the existing water system. I think that's the inference there. And Rich isn't here today, but I've talked to him too. So I guess what the residents are coming to is, since that's the agreement, and the applicant also agrees, and please let me know, that they join the existing water system, why not put that in there then, and make it clear?
Mm-hmm.
And just be clear with it, rather than be vague with a statement like that. Because it tends to get interpreted differently. The only other item that I had was minor plat condition number five, and a part of it is, is I'm just trying to understand minor versus major. So bear with me, I'm learning more than I ever thought I would. So once the major is approved, the minor can, the plat can be recorded, and then the minor goes away?
All right PJ, go ahead and ask that one.
Ready to get more confused?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so with plating, there is one step that's called a minor plat.
Okay.
Completely separate from plan unit developments. In a plan unit development, there's a major amendment and a minor amendment.
Okay.
So a major amendment essentially is something that will affect the entire plan unit development, which is what Kelly, correct.
This is, okay.
A minor plat is not the same as a minor amendment of a PUD. They're completely separate. But one of the conditions of the minor plat is to go through this process of the PUD amendment, which is what he's doing. It's just one of several conditions. So once this, this PUD amendment is just one step of the list of things that need to be done prior to recording.
Of the minor?
Of the minor plat.
Okay. Of the minor plat.
Yep.
And that condition number five, that's in the minor plat, not the minor PUD amendment?
Correct.
Okay. Wow, I don't believe that I said that correctly.
You did good.
So that would still, is still enforceable. I'm just trying to make sure that we understand what needs to be provided to the county, as far as a plan.
Yep, and the minor plat was approved by the Board already with the list of conditions.
Okay.
And like I said, this major plan unit development is just one of those several conditions.
So this doesn't go away?
It doesn't go away, and it's not really enforceable at this meeting.
And then, when that plan still would have to be provided to planning?
Correct.
Okay. And is that, is that something that whomever owns the system needs to provide? Whether it's the applicant or the HOA?
Well, in here, I believe it says the applicant shall provide documentation, so whoever the applicant of the minor plat was.
So we would just have to work on that then, together. Okay. All right, that's just, that's it, I guess. Mainly it's that item number 20, just make it clear exactly what the intent is. Thank you for your time. I just said, just, you guys can make up the legal ease part of it, but I'm just recommending that we just state what we're going to do, and that's require the four lots to join the existing Sheridan Lake Highlands HOA water system. Is that? Because then it makes it very clear.
Anybody else in the audience would like to speak?
Thank you.
Any Commissioners have any questions?
PJ, I have a question for you. I see that changes, the number changes, 18, that condition. Have we brought a engineer out there to take a look at the percolation tests? And is that area going to handle additional residences? Sounds like there's a concern of poor soil conditions and negative environmental impact.
So at the time of a building permit application, those will be required for the septic system, and then we'll find out at that time what's going on. I believe that they were done a long, a long time ago, but I don't have that information.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one comment, please, Mr. Chair. You know, regarding number 20, the no private wells will be drilled, I certainly don't have any objection to adding on to that a statement about joining the existing water supply, but I do think that this part, that no private wells will be drilled on any individual lot should remain, to prevent, let's say somebody wants to drill their own well to, you know, water their garden, for example, or something. I still think that that's, it doesn't hurt to keep that on there, as well as clarify that they'll, that they will join the existing water association.
Would it be better just to say no wells will be drilled, rather than no private wells? That way, it kind of eliminates the possibility of any other type of well system that might would come in. Because if you say no private wells, you're kind of limiting it in scope. And PJ and I were talking about this because I think it was one of Sig's concerns whenever he was, when he was talking about it.
They're shaking their head no on that one, I guess. So you want to keep private in, is that the?
Yes, well, I think what it has to be.
Can you cover to?
Again, I think the, I'm sorry, Elaine Karski, again with the Sheridan Lake Highlands HOA Board. I think it's just the word private maybe needs to go away, and just say no wells. We're going to, we've talked to Ryan. He's planning on drilling a well and hooking it into the existing system to be able to support those additional lots. But it'll be built within the easement, rather?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it won't be, and then he'll attach that to the existing well.
That's what I was talking about. I was talking about removing private.
Removing private.
Correct.
Would help us on that. Thank you.
So is it more of a?
Catherine, does that help?
Yes.
It's going to be more of a community well then?
Yes.
So we got to be careful, because if we put no wells, that would even?
I don't think you want to say no well.
That would eliminate the community part of it.
No, I think private needs to stay in. I think you got it backwards. I got it backwards, okay.
So you want to keep private in there?
Mr. Chair.
Travis.
We could just add to condition 13, that these lots be included in the water system.
The HOA's water system?
Included into that water system, rather than?
There you go.
Lots three through six.
Good idea.
Mark?
If we've got it stated that no, no wells will be drilled on any individual lots, that shouldn't preclude you from drilling a well for the homeowners association. It's not going to be on an individual lot. It's going to be, is that correct? Or is it going to be on an individual lot?
It would probably be on the division of two.
That would be.
Okay.
So it would be in there. Okay. Okay. Hmm.
So that is a concern.
Okay, fair enough. Any other audience member? Nope. I, I have a question, Mr. Kelly, if you don't mind. So PJ mentioned something here just recently about, correct me if I'm wrong, PJ, it's lots three through six, there's a couple of them that have, you've had individuals come in for building permits?
We don't know which specific lots, but, and I've spoken to one agent of a landowner, and then other staff has spoken to either landowners or agents of others wanting building permits.
Okay, and so they're wanting building permits on those lots, and if I remember correctly, they're not completely platted yet, is that correct?
They're not platted yet, but they're, anybody who, a landowner could come in and do a building permit now, but only one for a house.
Only one for a house.
Yes.
So my question to you, Mr. Kelly, is, are they aware of what they're, what they've purchased yet, just out of curiosity, without a?
Yes.
A plat and everything?
Yeah, fully aware.
They're fully aware?
Yeah, fully aware. There should only be one client we're discussing there, yeah, I think. And I should have been the only person calling for the building permit, I think. So, yeah, they're very aware. In fact, I think they watch the meetings on, on closed circuit or wherever, on, on the internet, so, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Kelly? I don't have any other questions.
And if we're?
You're welcome to have a seat unless you're?
Super. I'd leave that one as no private wells.
You would leave it as no private wells?
I would, yep.
All right.
It's my thought.
Where we stand, is we're looking for a motion for item number eighteen?
I can move for approval of major plan unit development seventeen oh four with twenty-two conditions, and modifying condition twenty to, to add that, at the end of it, that no private wells will be drilled on any individual lots, and lots three through six will join the existing water system. And that proposed lots three through six will join the existing water system.
Second?
Any discussion? I think that meets the intent of what they were discussing earlier, I just want to make sure. Okay, seeing no, no other further discussion, let's go ahead with the current motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None opposed, that means it passed, and that moves us on to item number nineteen.
Number nineteen is minor plan unit development amendment seventeen oh five to amend this existing Sunset Ranch plan unit development to reduce the setback from twenty-five feet to twelve feet along the western property line. The applicant is Tanner Colburn.
The applicant is in the audience as well.
Thank you. Staff is recommending to continue plan unit development seventeen oh five to the August fourteenth, two thousand seventeen Planning Commission meeting. Planner Amy is up here, just in case you had any questions, those two eyes getting continued. Normally, we would put something like this on the consent, so the continuation must have come after the agenda was posted.
Correct. Gotcha. Any questions from the commission? What's the specific reason why it was moved, if you?
Yeah, no, so what, Amy Rittering, Planner One, sorry.
It's fine.
So the reason why we're moving it to being continued for the next Planning Commission is the sheds in question, they're, in further reading the applicant's request, the sheds in question are being used for work purposes, and so the actual amendment needs to, if the applicant is using them as for work purposes, and not, and understanding what that, that work purpose is, we need to, we need to adjust the minor amendment to include fully what we're using the sheds for. So that way, it's all encompassing versus just partially encompassing just the setbacks. So that's, that's really what we're motioning to continue this for.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'd be open to a motion.
Does anybody want to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We don't need a motion to continue.
Absolutely sorry. Yes, is there anybody from the audience that would like to speak on, on item nineteen? I'm sorry, forgive me.
Steve Bieber, living next door to this.
Barb Bieber.
Barb, okay.
I guess we're wondering why we're brought here today to, to address this, and we knew nothing of possibly moving it, continuing it to August. I mean, we have several neighbors here that are here to support us, and I guess we'd like an explanation.
As Planner One just explained, there's a reason that, they're trying to get some better clarification for this particular piece of property. And to do that, to do right, if you will, to make sure that everyone is aware of what's being used for, they're gonna have to verify some stuff before they can make sure that it is, you know, set up here appropriately. That doesn't mean you can't give your concerns now. I mean, we're, we're absolutely willing to listen to your concerns, because we've done that in the past, where something has happened, it's come forward, and it was to be continued, but there was people that were already here, because they were already aware of the public announcement, and then we didn't want you to feel like, obviously your voice wasn't heard. So this is an opportunity for you to pass on any concerns if you have them, and we'll annotate them, and they'll be added to the next package whenever it moves forward, as well as you should be getting another notification that it's gonna be on a set date.
Okay, well, our main concern with this whole situation is the fire hazard.
So, can you tell me a little bit more about that?
May I show you a few pictures?
If this place ever catches fire, it's gonna burn so hot and so fast, and it's gonna kill every one of our trees, it's going to possibly burn our place down. I mean, it's right by the propane tank, if that propane tank blows.
PJ, has someone been out to the site recently by chance?
So Brittany and I were out at the site. We were out on the site on July eighteenth.
July eighteenth?
Correct.
Did you see?
Correct. To my knowledge, the logs in question that you were seeing through are going to be used for a fence that is going to be put up and constructed once the variance, or not the variance, I'm sorry, the plan unit development, or minor amendment has been discussed, there's, that, that's what those timber pieces are going to be used for.
Okay. Want to see, make sure everybody has a chance to look at them.
This place has been an eyesore ever since he has moved in. It just keeps getting worse and worse.
When he, when he built the sheds in question, he knew he needed to be twenty-five feet from the property line. They were not built twenty-five feet from the property line. He was given a permit, he did not have any permits to build those sheds. And then after the sheds were built, and I called the county to report that he didn't have any building permits, he somehow was issued a permit to build the addition on his house without coming into compliance in moving his sheds.
PJ, or?
So, we, so, this has been an ongoing case in our office since February. Mike, myself, Brittany, we have been working with the applicant on bringing the property into compliance. The property, the ish, the permits were issued when the plan unit development amendment was applied for. And so, it's all in an effort to try and bring the whole property into compliance. We are trying to work with the applicant in an effort to bring the whole property into compliance. The sheds now have been moved.
No, they have not.
When we conducted the site visit, it would appear that the sheds were the setback. They did appear to look at that.
On July eighteenth?
Correct.
No, have not been moved.
So, with that being said, those sheds in question, that's something to be discussed when we go through the site visit, go through and readdress these with the applicant.
Who, just out of curiosity, who, who measured that, or is it just visualized, or?
Mike went out and measured it several times. Brittany and I measured the one in the back.
There's two of them that are only nineteen feet from the property line.
And I guess my question is then, if there's two different opposing measurements, are you sure you're using the right line? I mean, have you have it surveyed, just to make sure everything?
Yes, there's, there are survey stakes.
And the fence is actually on our side.
Yep, his fence comes down, and it's right on the property line. When I added to that fence, I went right beside it. So our fence is actually six inches away from the property line. We've got pictures of stakes, the actual property line is.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
Question for PJ. Has Mike found any ordinance offenses at that property?
His last comment for this PUD was ordinance enforcement has no objections, his comments for this.
So we have no ordinances that require lumber like that to be cleaned up? Is that, how about the fire, the fire department, have they?
There wasn't a comment from Jerome on, in this P, in this staff report.
Can we, can we request that Jerome inspect the property?
We can, we already have it written down, and someone talked to with the continuation.
Okay, because I?
He's probably got a?
I understand your concern.
Probably has a hundred pallet setting back there.
Yeah.
And I don't know if everybody knows how a pallet burns, I would assume, I mean, they burn so hot. There's just pallets everywhere, there's just, it's, it's unbelievable, it's just.
And PJ, my, my other question would be, I know it's on a structure, but I am looking at the picture, and it is right there, when you're storing stuff like that, are you still supposed to store that off your setback to, as well? When you're storing lumber?
Not necessarily, no.
Not necessarily?
No.
Okay, I just wanted to?
My question is, too, if it's being checked for work, these are not commercial property. These are residential. You are not supposed to be storing building material. I'm, I'm a general contractor.
Mm-hmm.
My house is right next door. Pan over and see what our place looks like. I don't bring all my stuff home and throw it in the yard.
May I offer up a petition that we've circulated around some of the neighbors that, you know, have to see this property?
Drive by that every day?
I mean, you can always talk to your neighbors, have you sign a?
No, I haven't.
Oh, petition, oh, okay.
It's represented by twenty-six households.
And we only went to twenty-seven.
I can give that to you.
And the new, and the, the only reason why one didn't sign, he just moved in, he said, I just soon not get involved yet.
All right, any other questions? Nope. All right, let's see if there's anybody, there's some, someone else in the audience too, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have, we have seven people here.
Okay.
I mean, that are representing this area.
All right, absolutely.
Good morning. I'm Jim Russell, I live north east of the Tanner property. I kind of sit up on a hill. I am also a volunteer firefighter, I've been a firefighter since I've been seventeen years old, I won't tell you how old I am now. My main concern is if I were to try to sell my property, I see a very large portion of his property and the lumber and pallets in the, the yard. It would be awful hard for me to get an asking price with a yard that looks like that next door. As a firefighter, those pallets, they could be treated, if they're old, they could be treated with arsenic, methyl bromate. They catch on fire, we're gonna evacuate that subdivision, and that house is gonna go. We're gonna save the one next to it, if we can, because of the amount, the sheds are so close together, they're so close to the house with the propane tank. If anybody knows what propane does, I would not want to be there. He has tried to clean up the front, I amend, applaud that, that's great. The backyard is terrible, you don't know what's in there. There's shrubs, dead trees, lumber, and et cetera. That's my main concern, is it is definitely an eyesore. Thank you for your time.
Any questions for Jim? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Any other audience members who'd like to speak?
Good morning, I'm Michael Morford, I'm also resident of the Sunset Ranch subdivision. I live a few houses down from, from Steve Bieber. Aside from the terrible eyesore and fire hazard, I feel very strongly that the twenty-five foot setback should be enforced. I spent twenty years in the military, a lot of that living in dorms and tent city and stairwell living, people right on top of me. The reason that I chose my house where I did was that I know that no house could be, or structure could be any closer than twenty-five feet to the, to the property line. I, I wanted a little bit of space. I appreciate my neighbors, I like my neighbors, but I think we all appreciate our elbow room, and, and, you know, I think we should respect that of each other. As for the fire hazard, that is a concern for me as well. I keep my entire property six acres mode to three inches, just in case that that is, that is an issue. I think we should all be responsible in ensuring that we minimize any chance of fire hazard for, for the safety of everyone.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions for Mike? Any, thank you, Mike, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other audience members would like to speak on this, on this item?
Hi, John Davis. We moved up here about four and a half years ago, and we're up on a hill above this place too. And may I show you a picture?
Okay, your, your, your screen did something. That was just this morning?
That's your view.
Yeah, it's really nice.
Gotcha.
But, you know, there's, there's no other houses out there that have anything like that in their yard, so, it's just, it's kind of worrisome. You know, we moved up here so we'd be, you know, not have neighbors right next to us and everything, so, thank you.
All right, just one second, anybody have any questions for?
Mr. Chair, I have a comment.
Go ahead, sir.
It sounds to me as though the neighbors, regardless of whether or not there's a setback given, they still have a concern of fire hazards and so forth. Would it be possible for one of you to, or all of you, to talk to Tanner and say, Tanner, you cleaned the place up? And we'd be happy to come before the planning board and ask them to allow for your variance and your setback? If he gets it cleaned up, then let him know, you won't have a problem with the set. Am I hearing you correctly, that if he could get the rest of this cleaned up, you guys wouldn't be worried about the setback of a?
I called him one time and talked to him about it. And I said, you know, I said, I had a Realtor stop by one day, and he said, you know, that takes about ten thousand dollars right off your property value. I said, if I went to sell this, I said, I could, and he said, why, are you selling? I said, well, no, I'm not. He said, well, call me when you are.
Plus, our taxes just went up thirty-six point four percent, but didn't take into account what we live next to. We, we have talked about this many times, and, and if he had been clean over there and had been a decent neighbor and not, not confrontational, if he'd have asked, we'd have had no problem with it.
And if we knew, he would keep it that way.
But it's not gonna stay that way.
It won't, he could, he could clean it completely up, and I guarantee in two years, it would be just right back to that. You know, and another thing about all the stuff laying around, all the rodents and snakes and everything else that we're gonna be dealing with.
Got you.
I mean, we have tried so hard to keep our place up, and like I said, and obviously we must have done something decent with our place, because the taxes started to become improved, did the real estate appraisal, and thirty-six point four percent. And that's next door.
Yep. Any further questions for Steve and Barb?
No, Mr. Chair, I, one more comment. I, I understand we all have neighbors that sometimes we don't like. And unfortunately, unless they're violating an ordinance, there's not a whole lot the county can do about it. Now, we can determine whether or not we want to approve a setback variance, but the rest of it is something that either have to, the burden of proof is on you. You have to prove that this is a fire hazard and it's a danger to everybody else before anybody can do anything about it. So, you know, I feel for you. I mean, we get, we get pictures and we got a firefighter right here, so.
And just remember today it's not for approval. They're going to continue it. I mean, that's the, that's a recommendation.
But I just, I, I just, I just want on record that we got seven, seven neighbors here too that are opposing it plus, plus all the permits or the petition.
Petitions, absolutely. Thank you very much. I appreciate the information.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask Amy a question? Just so I understand, so the sheds that have been built are intended to store building materials? Or is there an intent for the sheds? Do we know what those are being used or to be used for? And someone's raising their hand, so is that Tanner?
This is Tanner, yes.
Okay, so maybe it would be more appropriate to ask him. Sorry, I didn't realize who's in the audience.
No. The only information that I had was going off of his application letter that's in your packet.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I'm Tanner Colburn. Nice to meet you guys. I was just gonna plan on waiting to talk to them about everything, but with everyone saying their two cents, I wanted to come up and just kind of say a few things. I understand my place was rough. I had a lot going. It's no excuse. I have three kids at three. My dad moved out of his house. My grandpa died. I inherited a ton of stuff when my grandpa died that my other family and a lot of my neighbors thought was junk. I got it all moved into storage. It was a lot of money. So then, back to the me knowing about the building permits. I was building a dog run and the neighbor comes over and says, what are you doing building a dog run? After I completed, he comes over and says, you have to tear that down. I did find out that you're not allowed to build within the setback, so I tore my fence and dog run out. Then, in the winter, I had all this stuff. I'm wanting to pick my place up. I had the idea I would build a few sheds on skids, not knowing if they're on skids, they're movable, they're not a permanent structure. I should have done my homework. I didn't know I needed building permits. Once I got called and told that I needed building permits, I came in to pull them, found out that even though they're temporary structure, they have to be twenty-five feet away. Well, I had messed up and already built them, so I said, I'll pay whatever fees that that incurs. I didn't know. And asked if I should pull permits. They said, wait until I get this figured out to find out if I need to move them first or if I need, what I need to do. I've been trying to handle everything accordingly. Hearing the potential fire hazards, I will definitely get that cleaned up. I had been collecting pallets from shingles. I do a lot of roofing. I have a wood burning stove, so I tear those down and use them to try to help with costs. I mean, with three kids and I, I only have one income. My wife stays home with the kids. Yeah, I thought this was about the setback. Now that I know that there's more things to it, I mean, I want to comply. I plan on living there forever. I like Rapid City. I don't plan on leaving. I'm just wanting, if you look at how my land's set up, it's not technically drainage, but there's a big little, where when heavy water flows go, I can't really go the other direction. I finished my garage into a family room. The sheds are used for storage. I have a little office where I do paperwork because if anyone's tried doing paperwork with three kids at three, it's a nightmare. I was falling behind, so I figured I'll build an office on skids. It's insulated, it's quiet. I put an AC unit on there. As far as building materials go, I'm not quite there yet with my company where I can have an actual drop yard. I don't stack materials, but when there's leftovers that are good that I can still use, I build. I used to just throw them down because I was going as crazy as I could. Now I built, whatever you call it, like the things that racks for them, like Menards has to put everything. I think if anybody can see the amount of work I've done since I put in for this application. I mean, I'm moving in the right direction. I'm doing everything I can. I still work eighty to a hundred hours a week. And luckily I have family willing to help me. With all that, I'll just wait to meet with them, figure out what else I need to do. I just wanted you guys to at least hear my side. I'm not wanting to be a burden. I'm not wanting to be an ice sore. I want a nice property. I'm just young and I'm trying to get there, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions for Tanner?
Do, Mr. Chair, that's a question. Do you think it's reasonable that you could put together some sort of schedule?
Absolutely.
For dealing with these issues?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair?
Okay.
Yes, regarding the sheds, you said they're on skids, so except for this drainage issue, I mean, that's, is that the limiting factor on why you can't move them further away?
I can move them and it's not even that hard to move them. The issue is if you look where that drainage and where it cuts off, if I move them over, I don't have an area to work in. I do a lot of random crafts things. I make stuff out of all that wood. I make tables, chairs, benches. I have them lined up where I have my material one that's open, that's only a ten by ten, so we're not even talking about that one, that I keep like nails, screws, felt paper, whatever in that one. Then I have my pen workshop because I make custom pens in another one that isn't in the setback issue. And then I have one that's just with my camping, hunting and fishing stuff. And then I have my office and the office and the camping, hunting and fishing stuff are the two that are only nineteen feet. And the only reason they are there is there's enough room to drive by them. And then, when I pull in the back, I have an area to work. If I move them over, I'm going to have to work in that little like ditch rivet area. My mentality is if, if it was, if his house was only twenty-five from that property and I was actually encroaching onto it, I could completely understand, but they are huge properties out there, six plus acres. And all I'm asking is just a little bit so that I can have a work area. Cleaning up the wood, the materials, I'm completely in agreement. In fact, if you pay attention over the last two weeks to a month at how much I've actually got cleaned up, I mean, I want a nice place, but three kids at three with working a ton of hours, I'm just, I'm trying as hard as I can. It just takes me a little bit. I don't know if that answers it.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions for Tanner? No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other audience members who'd like to speak on this? Sure. If everyone else has spoke at least once that wants to, I don't see anybody else interested in speaking, so.
Pictures we handed to you, some of them are from two months ago, some are from four months ago. Two of them there are from two days ago. Figure out which ones are from two days ago. He says he's cleaned it up. It's, it's not. I could clean up more than that in a day than he has in two months. Yes, they've been over there, but they moved this pile of that pile of that. There's just, there's nothing that's going on to improve it. And it's just, like I said, I just ask you just not to let this happen. I mean, yes, he's got a drainage ditch running through his property, but we didn't tell him to buy that property. You know, we didn't, we're not the ones that say, hey, you need to buy this one, perfect place for you. And as far as the drainage, if you look at their, he's a hundred feet, I don't know, a good hundred feet away from that drainage. He's got all kinds of rooms. I mean, moving back ten feet, that is not going to make that big of a difference in his work area. And like I said also, this is not commercial property.
Rise up.
Nobody, nobody has the right to have a business. Like I said, I'm a general contractor and I don't do it. So why should he do it? And that's why we moved out there, was for the quiet place. And in all my years of different neighbors, I've never had a one that I never got along with. Never.
Right. That's actually kind of out in my neck of the woods. I actually live in New Underwood and I've actually been out in that neighborhood a few times.
Come on out. Sit on my deck and have a beer and look at it.
Actually, I was going to say, I'm leaving town this afternoon after the meeting, going down to Custer for church camp for the week. But when I come back, I'll probably drive through there and I'll come by and I'll take a look at that property. I'll poke my head out there and see, you know, if he's doing what he says he wants to do, which is, he wants, he says he wanted to clean it up, so we'll see what happens between now and then. But I, I plan on driving out there to, to take a look at it since it's in my pathway to and from Rapid when I come into town, so.
Yep, so walk onto our property, check it out and just look, just look what we look at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the, comments from the commission? Being none, any other audience members?
My name's Caitlin Andis. I live directly across from Steve and Barb and so they're kitty corner from us. And the mess, you know, what you want to do on your land is your priority and I don't care, but the thing is, he has six acres to build on. You can move dirt, you can move things around. There's no reason that he needs to get that close to the property line. We moved out there so we can have space. And he does this, he's going to set a precedence for the whole, whole unit. You know, we want our six acres. We don't want people on top of us. If we did, we'd still live in Rapid City where people would drive through our front yard. So that's, that's my concern. You know, there's six acres there. I mean, if the house is too small, if the property is too small, maybe we should buy a property that suits your family. So, that's all I have to say.
Any questions for Caitlin? Any none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I saw a young gentleman in the back.
My name's Nick Toth. I'm the property just to the east of there, the one five five eight three. And in a way, that twenty-five foot has kept me from building a garage. You can see I have a camper and then a trailer right beside it. For me to build a garage there, I would be within that twenty-five feet, so that's what's kept me from building anything there. I'm on a hill, so I would have to do a lot of dirt work to build anything else, so we just haven't. If you zoomed out on that picture, you looked at the other housing area, you'll see that Kasky built a lot of houses for some reason right on the edge of the property line instead of in the middle. And so what a lot of other people have done is built their garages further behind, which is fine. At Tanner's place, that blue line is the water level or the water creek. I don't know how well it shows up in yours. If you do a, a new Google image, they were updated this last week because I have the same one printed. You can see exactly where it's at. His fence, when we were pouring cement for that, you, we dug down two feet, three feet, something like that, and about a foot down, your water. So you really can't do much more this way. Obviously, you don't want to build in front of the house. I don't even know if you're allowed to build in front of the house. But, you know, a few months ago, yeah, there was a camper in the front yard. There's a lot of stuff everywhere. He has done a lot of work. They've got rid of the camper. They've actually organized, some of the piles have gotten bigger, but they're more organized. The sheds we can, we can definitely move. That's not too big of an issue. But he ha, I have seen, I'm, like I said, I'm on the other side and I've seen progress. We have a realtor that's waiting for it. We're doing the siding and everything, trying to get our house presentable. We have a realtor. He didn't say anything about the neighbors hurting our property. So, I mean, maybe it would, maybe it wouldn't, but he didn't have any concern. As far as like their house, I mean, arguably one of the best lots out there. They maintain it, they water it, they have trees, they got. I mean, it's honestly one of the best lots out there in my opinion. So comparison side by side, there is a huge difference and I get that. But if you drive out there, when, if you go out there this afternoon, you'll see there's plenty of other houses out there that have stuff in their yards. They got, you know, they don't look nearly as nice. So, I mean, it's not just one house, there's plenty of houses. My house isn't the best. You go out there and you'll see it's, we've got junk in the backyard and it's just, you know, you live out in the country, you don't expect your neighbor right next door to you to be complaining about everything, how short your grass is or how tall your grass is or this or that, you know. We have space, but having that, those piles, I, I could see where they're coming from. And they, like I said, they have been doing work on it. They have been moving stuff. Those pallets used to be kind of in a pile and now they're stacked. Getting rid of them is an option too. I mean, we maybe just dispose of them, you know.
Question for you. Is that area, I, I don't think anybody asked this question earlier. Is that area under a homeowners association or anything of that nature?
It is, but it doesn't seem to matter. We're not supposed to have all lives, you know, there's cows out there, there's chickens. And when we moved in, we weren't supposed to have any of that stuff. So I don't, nobody seems to enforce it. Nobody seems to care.
Okay.
As far as me, I mean, this issue was about that twenty-five foot to go over twelve foot. I don't see, I mean, they're two hundred and some feet away from each other. Moving in another twelve feet isn't going to hurt anything. And that's what the whole issue here is, right? That twenty-five foot to twelve foot.
Right, because the, the county has setback requirements.
I mean, to, to allow them to do another small add-on, I don't see the problem. I mean, everything else, you know, we can work together and, you know, help them out. But that setback, I don't see an issue with. Because even if it was on my side, I wouldn't care. I mean, I wouldn't mind having a little more room so I could build a garage if I were staying, I mean.
Any other questions? Any none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
PJ, there's, there's a gentleman in the back that wants to speak just in case. Okay. I didn't know if you're going to offer more information to us, so.
I'll be quick. There is a homeowners association, not the Jim Russell.
Okay.
Initially, when I signed, and it's in black and white, that you cannot run a business out of your property, period. There's, the homeowners association is being reviewed at this time with Ryan Kasky. And we are coming up with a, a better plan for that, to allow for more things. What is going to change, I can't tell you, but there will be some changes to that homeowners association. Thank you.
Anybody else before PJ comes up? But I think he's, I don't see any other hands, so.
I couldn't ask for a better segue. When this planning and development was first approved in two thousand, and this is kind of an FYI, in two thousand and four and then it updated in two thousand and eight, it was on, it was only going to be reviewed on complaint basis only. I mean, somebody goes and applies for an amendment and of course it's going to come up. Most of the conditions are still written for when it was created. So the prohibition of commercial on the property, it doesn't say it in here that you can't do it. It doesn't say you can do it, but somebody always has the right to ask. And if the HOA is updating all of its covenants right now, it's a great opportunity to do a major amendment and make sure your PUD and the covenants match. Because the county cannot enforce covenants unless it specifically mentions vacation home rentals. Otherwise, there's, there are two separate documents. So it's a great opportunity for everybody in that development.
Right, to get together, have that conversation with their HOA.
And, yep, and make sure they match.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments from the commission?
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, PJ, what you're saying is, is currently there are no regulations that say you cannot operate commercial business off of those pieces of property?
Correct.
There's nothing that says you can, but there's nothing that says you can't.
So which condition does it say it? Sorry.
Pardon me?
I'm trying to, I'm asking to. In the staff report under G, it says at this time, home occupations and home offices are not permitted in the planned unit development. And additional amendment would be needed for, for this. That's some of the reasons why it's being continued because of the extra that staff found while they were researching the staff report.
Okay.
So if that is something that the applicant still wants to do, then it's possibly have to be re-advertised and start over because it's a new request.
Gotcha.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right, currently there is no motion. The staff's recommendation is to continue the minor planning unit development, PU seventeen oh five to the August fourteen twenty seventeen planning commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, I think that carries us to the next item, item number twenty.
Just one second here, please. Item twenty is major plan unit development amendment seventeen oh seven to rezone four point three eight acres from highway service to plan unit development on lot four, track D. This was before you in two thousand and sixteen with the applicant Donna and Lyle Hartshorn. It'll appear to be in the audience today. What you see on the screen right now outlined in red is the current plan unit development that was approved in two thousand and sixteen with twenty-nine conditions for uses such as weddings, a farmer's market, chapel, birthday parties, and they're seasonal. They're basically listed on page eight of fourteen. Since that time, the applicant has purchased an additional property which is currently zoned highway service, which is right where that X is. And with this major plan unit development, what they're looking to do is to add that parcel into the plan unit development and also create a PUD overlay over the highway service which is there. Right now, the PUD is, has an overlay over general agriculture and limited agriculture as it exists. And basically what an overlay does is once that use is no longer there, it reverts back to its original zoning. So the applicant also has to not only meet with the conditions of the PUD, but also with the conditions of that underlying land use. So the applicant is asking to increase the allowed vendors at the farmer's market from thirty to sixty, which basically changed the number of parking spaces, so staff updated the conditions accordingly. One of the conditions from the previous. One of the conditions from the previous PUD last year has been met, which was the building permit for an unpermitted building. This was routed through the interdepartmental review. City of Rapid City Planning commented back that the future land use of the property is mixed-use commercial, forest and conservative and agriculture. Let me see if I can get a zoning map here, I guess not. There we go. And City Public Works, in the first sentence, says they do not object to including the Hartshorns' property described above into the PUD. This was also sent to nine-one-one emergency, emergency response. Um, and they indicated that there are four address points currently on the, on the driveway. And any additional physical addresses will need to require driveway to be named at the owner's expense, basically for signage. Um, it appears the applicant is already utilizing the property in a similar manner as with sixteen oh one, they're just looking to expand it. There have been no complaints received from our office since the PUD was in effect. And the majority of the surrounding area is highway service and caters to tourists and vacation travelers and appears to be in harmony with the surrounding use, and therefore staff would recommend approval of major plan unit development seventeen oh seven with twenty-eight conditions.
All right, any questions for PJ? Questions for PJ, anybody, any audience members like to speak? Come on up, sir.
Good morning, my name's Kalen Dringman. I'm a property owner to the south of the Hartshorns, forty acres there. My concern is just maintaining my easement coming in that way and making sure I can get in and out while they're doing the farmers market. So, if you can help me with that, I'm happy. Okay, I own all of, if you look at your map there, I own all the property to the south, starting just about, if you're familiar with that, where there's a bed and breakfast very close to highway sixteen, and then that would be my, uh, western property corner. And then if you follow all the way where the right red boundary is, that's all my property down to the south there. So, Spring Creek is basically my southern, well, near my southern border.
Mr. Chair, can I ask him a question?
Go ahead.
Which easement are you referring?
It would be.
Is it pictured here?
Yeah, it comes off of sixteen, it'll be the main one that they're using right now. If, if you look right where the trailer park is.
Right.
Okay, yep, right here, can I, if it touches?
John Madden on it, yeah.
If it.
So that's the easement you're concerned?
That's, that's coming onto my property, right there.
Yep. You own one directly to the south? Hey, you and your wife were in, a while ago, do a house.
Yeah, about, about a year ago.
Yep. Okay. So this, I don't believe she has any plans to affect the easement. She did request to name that, but she wouldn't, she wouldn't be able to name that portion of it, but.
Sure.
Okay.
And then I, I would suppose I have a further on concern, or a follow-on concern. Uh, I know they wanna do some other things, and I'm not exactly sure of what they plan on doing. My, my home is approximately in this area.
Bottom right corner, I guess.
Right there. And if, if there's any development going on, I know at one time they were talking about a, a horse arena. Just that I'm, I'm notified before that goes in, because honestly, I don't want it there.
They, I think they would be notified on that one, right, no?
No, it, um, the notification came with the PUD in two thousand and sixteen, because that was part of the original request. If the applicant came in to do any building permits for anything that required a building permit or a construction permit to convert any over ten thousand square feet into an arena, those would not be public.
Really?
I mean, they, we don't advertise them other than a month later, once they're approved, or if they're approved. But there wouldn't be any hearing letters sent out as if there would be for a PUD or conditional use permit or something like that. For what she's indicated that she's proposing, it sounds like either a building permit or a, or a construction permit.
Gotcha.
All right.
And I'm, I'm just looking here, so if I understand the road, and I see how you drew it up there with the blue, basically it's that dirt road that comes around and then goes right along, where it looks like she drew a, either corral or something down in there to parking. Your map looks a little bit.
Yeah, those are future plans of hers. It's the indoor arena plus parking for.
Yeah, and that, that area there wouldn't really necessarily concern me a whole lot, just over where my house is.
Okay.
It, it appears that, that easement is platted, platted through that property.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and the map that's on the screen is from the two thousand and sixteen request, there is an updated map in your packets. And just so, it still does show the indoor arena and the parking in the same location proposed. I know the applicant has indicated, it's been in the original staff report, their main intention is to maintain ag on this property for their cows.
And that's primarily gonna be a private use arena that we understand?
Um, no, she had indicated that she would have events there.
Yeah, this kinda overlapped it, the place I purchased it through an auction about the same time they were proposing all this. I got the initial proposal, but then I showed up at that meeting, and then it was postponed, and then postponed again. And then by the third time it happened, I wasn't able to come to that meeting, so, I didn't even know about that one, so.
In, in the proposed, in the approved conditions for the last PUD, she has indicated, she has, have for year-round use, there's wagon rides and pony rides, so they'll have to be somewhere to keep those animals. But from November through April only is when she's indicated for the rodeos. Um, it's listed on page eight of fourteen, and then also as the conditions of sixteen oh one. I don't know if you knew that.
No, I, I haven't.
Yep, no problem.
Any questions for Kalen?
Thank you for letting me be heard.
Thank you, Kalen, thanks. Any other members of the audience that would like to speak? Come on up, sir.
Morning.
Morning.
My name is Kyle Grauman, I'm working as an agent for the landowner just directly to the north of this, and I really have no issue with it. I was just curious as to where, what the access would be to it, and now I can see, and where the parking would be. And, you know, and where they were planning to put all that. So.
Does this answer your questions then?
It, it, well, I think so, so from what I can tell, it looks like it's gonna be down to the south there in that corner.
Okay, let's slide over.
Well, it appears to me.
Okay, so, um, the existing access points is the applicant is still looking to maintain those. That's probably, I'm trying to find a better picture that we can do this with, oh, perfect, here we go. So she's still looking to use here in red, and she's looking, and they're requesting to add parking here. They have parking already approved down in this area for the pumpkin patch and the farmers market and the weddings, and then the arena here, and then parking over here for that. She's still proposing to use this as an access, and then also this as an access. And one thing I don't know, we had mentioned it last year, that what, what we had heard from DOT, from Stacy Bartlett, is their plans are to close this access off the highway, this access off the highway, this access off the highway, and change this intersection, make it bigger with lights. So that's gonna change getting off the highway and then taking the side streets up to the property.
Just gonna say, so that means they're gonna make them get off right there, is that, if I, that's the reptile gardens, correct?
Correct, across the street.
Really?
Correct. So that's a.
They take the access road then, is that correct?
Correct. Yep, and the applicant is aware of it, I didn't know if anybody, if you guys were aware of it as well, so we'd just like to let people know.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
So that's coming from DOT?
It's coming from DOT because of the safety issue, because there's a lot, there's accidents and rear, you know, cars speeding and then turning. So they wanna create a better intersection.
Are they gonna put, do you know if they're gonna put a light there, or what are you thinking?
So she had mentioned, again, that was a year ago, so.
Well, my only concern is gonna be with this being gravel road is increasing.
Talking about this.
And dust, yep, exactly. And who maintains that road? And honestly, I don't even know who owns that, either. If we do, or if they do, and who is maintaining it, or who will maintain it.
Yep, we'd have to look and see, I know that road, that's kind of the squiggly in blue is the one nine-one-one is referring to as far as would have to be named, so that could change also the category, I don't believe there's a road district out here.
Okay.
So I believe it's you guys, but we could look and see what it, if it's an easement.
Yeah, if we could do that at some point.
Sure, absolutely.
And also with the parking in here then, is it gonna be gravelled at all, or is it gonna stay? Because right now, I mean, parking on that, you putting up people on there, it's gonna start on fire.
Absolutely agree. Um, it has to be maintained in a dust-free manner, so she's gonna have to, she's gonna be required to clear it and to gravel it. Just like the other parking locations, they'd all have to be gravelled as well.
Okay, and you said in a dust-free manner?
Best as you can out here, yep.
This is South Dakota.
Right, no, I get that, but, you know, it, yeah, okay. Because it does get to be a mess after a while, and it's not terrible right now, and I'm all for, you know, them doing this, I think it'll be fine. You know, I don't mind having a farmers market down below us, I think it'll be nice, but, but, yeah, my only concerns are the parking and the access to it, and how well that's gonna be maintained, so.
All right, any other questions for Kyle?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Kyle.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other audience members like to speak on, on this item?
I move for approval.
Say it.
Move for approval.
Second.
Uh, motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, uh, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, I believe that takes us now to item number twenty-one, county board report. Sorry, just closing up here.
County board report, the Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendation from the June twenty-six, two thousand and seventeen Planning Commission meeting with the exception of layout plat seventeen fourteen for Dave and Nancy Fisher. The item was continued to perform additional research regarding Vic Drive. Uh, the Board of Commissioners concur with the Planning Commission's recommendations, uh, from the July tenth, two thousand and seventeen Planning Commission meeting.
All right, any questions for PJ?
Mr. Chair, PJ, remind me what that plat was.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna.
Yeah.
Which one was that one?
Do you remember?
Uh, yeah, Dave and Nancy Fisher, they owned some properties south of Pactola. Um, and they were combining for, four or five residential lots into their two lots. Well, they take access off of Vic Drive, and there's some issue with it because of an easement, and Vic Drive is where they go to their residence. But if they combine those lots, there's a lot to the north that somehow needs to get access to, and.
Remember that one?
Is that the one that's got the driveway about eight hundred feet long?
Yes, and it goes through one of the properties on the, on the side.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on that one? Oh, all right, items from the public, item twenty-two. Anybody from the public wanna speak? All right, seeing none, item twenty-three, items from the staff, staff, do you have anything for us today?
Um, as usual, we always add something that's not on there. One of the things that staff would like to ask the Planning Commission, once you have a full board here, a set of professional ethics is something that is kind of becoming mainstream, and there is a set of ethical principles for planning commissions, for Board of Commissioners, and also for planning departments set by the American Planning Association. It can be tweaked, it doesn't have to be, of course, adopted verbatim. If you're certified as a certified planner AICP, you're required to follow those ethical standards, but it is also something that they request that people, that associations, government agencies look at and possibly adopt in some way or form. Is that something with the five of you right now, be something that you'd wanna consider? Because I could bring it forward, at least as a packet you guys can read for next future meetings, and possibly we adopt it as a planning commission and also as an office.
Is that something we have to do each time we have new board members? Because I recall us doing that in the past.
That's code of conduct. Code of conduct.
Code of conduct.
That's from the county.
That, that's different.
Correct, yep.
Am I opposed, at least, taking a look and seeing what?
Absolutely not, PJ, you know, I'm about trying to be professional and act in that manner, so.
Okay.
Bring it forward, let us look at it.
Yeah, let's look at it. All right.
Well, I think anything that helps guide our actions, I think is helpful.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you PJ for that one. All right, item twenty-four, items from the membership, anybody have anything? Nope. All right.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned, thank you.
Good job.